One extra, I don't know which alternate.
No one was seated last night.
Okay.
Then we go to people. Lady Mary's on a quick brunch, then go pick the groceries up.
Well, that's a nice thing.
Yeah, we got like, yeah, and then by 1:00 we're home and it's.
Divided up by matter.
Do we need a nut?
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna call this evening's meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First, order of business is roll call and seating of alternates. I'm gonna ask our clerk, Commissioner Homicki, if you would please call the roll.
Commissioner Hammer's here.
Here.
Commissioner Lambrouney?
Here.
I'm here. Commissioner Brecklin?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Mr. Drake is not here. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Hughes is not here. Commissioner Giaffredo?
Here.
Mr. Merkelini?
Here.
Commissioner Laurie?
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Okay, so we're missing two regular members. We have three alternates. I think at the last meeting, none of the alternates were seated, if I recall correctly. So, how about we'll seat one of you on the first public hearing and another one on the second. But does anybody have a, anybody have a sense of whether you've not participated recently or have recently, just in terms of figuring?
I don't remember.
Okay. So how about, how about Paul on the first one and Joe on the second one?
Anna's sitting out on one, you saying?
No, I have. I voted last night, so I can say.
Okay.
Okay, I can sit out the second.
Well, we'll need one of you on each, excuse me, we need two of you on each one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, sorry. So, why don't we switch on the second one, you in if you want me?
Right.
Anna, okay. So, before we begin, we have two public hearing items. Just to go over what our procedure is on this, we call the applicant up to the podium over there. Please identify yourself, state your name and address for the record, present your application. There'll be an opportunity for the commission members to ask questions. There'll be an opportunity for any members of the public to ask a question or make a comment. If you do have a question, please direct it to the commission and we will ask the applicant to answer it. Once we close the hearing, we cannot engage in a dialogue at that point with the applicant or the public anymore, so keep that in mind when we close the hearing. And with that said, the first item, public hearing 2203, Zachary Silva seeking special permit for a shed over 200 square feet at 56 Cedar Street. Are you here? Would you please come forward to the podium and identify yourself again?
Hello, I'm Zach Silva, 56 Cedar Street, and I'm looking to get a shed in the backyard. It's a 12 by 24. It's a pre-built, so it's on a gravel pad. It's not permanent or anything. And that's pretty much it, just for storage.
Okay, so my math is 240.
It's like 280.
It's about, yeah, 288 or something like that?
Yeah, 288.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you tell us what you plan to use the shed for?
Just like personal stuff, like my jet ski, like big stuff that can't fit in my other garage. All household stuff.
And what, what other, are there any other outbuildings on the property?
Nope, nothing.
Is the garage part of the house?
Yes, attached to the house.
And how, how big is the garage?
Uh, same size, so it's 12 by 24.
A two-car?
Just one.
So do you already store materials in the garage in addition?
Yes, I already, I agree with already. It's not big enough for what I need.
All right, any questions, commission members? Peter?
Looking at the diagram that you drew here.
Yep.
And you have a septic field?
That was like back in the day, 'cause now I have, you know, city sewer, but like that was old, so it's not being used.
Otherwise, you'd be putting the shed over a septic field.
Yeah, it's not there anymore yet, 'cause now I have city.
So this, you abandoned the septic field and you have, so we're going out to the street, that's what you're saying?
Yep, yeah, it goes to the street.
I also noticed that you have a garage door.
Yeah, I just prefer that.
What it's gonna look like?
Yeah, that's exactly what it's gonna look like. I just like that look better than, uh, double doors.
You don't plan on putting any vehicles in there, right, cars?
Nah, I would, I wouldn't be able to fit one. My trucks are too big.
Paul, are you gonna add electricity to it or have any exterior lighting on it?
Uh, yeah, I'll probably do a floodlight for security purposes, and that's it for outside stuff.
Okay. Just a, just a floodlight that would come on and off, not all around it?
Yeah, just motion, yeah, yeah, motion, for sure.
Not used for entertainment or anything?
Nope, just for security at nighttime.
Yes, Joe?
Yeah, I drove by the property and it looks like the backyard slopes down, is that right?
Yeah, but like, it's an illusion, 'cause like, it's not as far as where it's gonna be. I'm gonna do eight feet from the ledge.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, so it won't, it's not gonna slide down the hill.
No, I was thinking if you had to landscape it or anything like that, to level it off?
I'm still, I'm gonna grow grass after, so I'm still grading it after, but I'm gonna do eight feet up, so it's not even gonna be near the hill.
And, and the fence around your property, how high is the fence?
Uh, six feet. I'm gonna take it down though, 'cause the fence is beyond repair.
Oh, is, okay.
I just bought the house, uh, last May, so I'm starting to do all this stuff to it.
Yeah, I was following that. And what's the height of the shed?
It's seven feet interior and it has the peak, so it's probably like nine feet tops.
What's the, how close is the closest neighbor on each side to the proposed shed?
Um, so my property line is 15 feet and then they have their 10, so we're like 25 feet from my house to that, so it would be like 20 feet away.
So looking from the street?
Yeah.
The neighbor on the right is gonna be closer to the shed than the one?
Yeah, 'cause they have a shed, right, and their property line, so mine's gonna be five feet off their shed.
Their shed is that depth in their lot as well?
Uh, what do you mean?
In other words, their house is towards the similar position?
Oh, yeah, our houses are aligned up, yeah, exact same set.
And the sheds will be aligned also?
Pretty close, yeah. Their shed is not as big as this one, but be pretty similar.
And what's behind you?
Uh, just more houses. I have a hill, so I like 20 feet behind the shed, that's mine.
It, it looks in a picture we have, like there's some treed area behind your house?
Yeah, so it's all trees back there.
Is that partially on your property?
Uh, kind of, and most of the trees are the guys' trees, so my trees are like, I probably have two big trees and the rest are his.
So do you have to take any trees down on your property?
Uh, no, it won't be near it.
And did you consider a shed of 200 square feet that would meet the regs and not require a special permit?
It's not big enough, 'cause my jet ski is 16 feet deep, so I need that depth. You know, 24 feet is enough.
So, so the jet ski, is the jet ski just in there the entire winter season?
Winter, yeah, so it'll be in there from like October to, you know, May.
And then, um, how often do you bring it out in the summer season?
I'll probably store it in my garage, so I don't have to go back and forth on the grass.
I'm sorry, you have a?
I'll probably store it on my garage, my main garage during the summer.
So you'll move, you'll move stuff out of the main garage and put it in the?
Yeah, so I'll probably drive in that, like, the grass, like, once every so often to get back there.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, I think you were asked about electricity. Is there any plumbing or anything proposed?
Nope, just power.
Anybody else? Yes, Peter and then Tom?
Go ahead, Tom. Couple of questions, sir. When you were examining your alternatives here?
Yep.
Did, you went with a manufactured house, a manufactured building?
Yeah.
Uh, what are the various sizes, do those come in, or did you research the different sizes?
Uh, there's any size you want, 'cause you can get custom ones. I mean, the standard ones are like, probably 12 by 16, uh, 12 by 20, and then 12 by 24 are the most common.
Okay, so those are all pretty large?
Yeah.
Yours is smaller than that, you say it's a custom?
Well, it's like, it's in a stock one, I found it in the lot. Like, I didn't, I didn't customize it.
Okay.
It just happens to match my house pretty close, so I like that one.
All right, were there any smaller?
I'm sure, but I wouldn't want, I wouldn't do it then if I had to get a smaller one.
Okay, do you need this size, this larger size?
Yeah.
You indicated that your jet skis are the biggest, the?
Well, I have, I have a lot of other stuff, too.
Okay. And so, this, is the size you feel you actually need to?
Yeah, I prefer a bigger, but any bigger wouldn't look, wouldn't look right in the backyard.
I'm sorry, bigger wouldn't look right?
Yeah.
I, I would concur with that.
Yeah, 24 looks like a good, you know, good size.
I was looking for, you know, more smaller, like, you know, instead of, uh, you know, 12 by 24, you know, 12 by 12, or 12 by 16, something like that?
Yeah, that'd be way too small for me.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Now, you indicated that the, the garage door type thing is, is, uh, something that you want to keep in, in the design of the, of the building?
Yeah, I just like that look. I'm not a fan of the double doors, it just looks a little cheesy, in my opinion, from the road, at least.
Now, did you receive a copy of the Town Planner's memorandum?
Yes, I called that guy, 'cause it was confusion, 'cause they thought I was using that road actively, but I haven't used that access in like eight months. 'Cause when I bought the house, we tore all these trees down and we were using that side road for access to get back there.
I, I cite to you, uh, item number two in, in terms of staff comments.
Yep.
Uh, recommendations, uh, on, uh, page one of the Town Planner's memorandum.
Yep.
And I quote, includes a statement with, uh, that this structure is to be used as a shed, not a, not a garage.
Exactly, yeah.
And, uh, you know, the concern is, by having the garage door, that leaves it, uh, you know, basically your application vulnerable.
Yep.
To be looking like, you know, to become a garage rather than a shed, and you could convert it in that, in that direction, sort of, sort of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You could convert it sort of, uh, in, in a hidden sort of fashion.
Oh, no, I mean, that's why I'm here and doing it in person, I didn't wanna go behind anyone's back, that's why I did all this. My truck would never fit in that garage. It would never fit, and I wouldn't even attempt to fit it in there, 'cause it would hit the doors when I opened it up. I just need more storage for my personal stuff. You know, that's it. I have a lot of toys and like, you know, household stuff like lawnmowers, snow blowers. I just, I need the room.
Uh, question for David, if you'll, did you examine the lot coverage with this?
Uh, only to confirm, yeah, I, I did, and they're, they are both, uh, they are under the required, I believe, 65%. I can double check, but I did look and they are, um, under the required total coverage and the accessory building is, uh, less than the maximum required size of a percentage to the principal structure as well.
And eyeballing, you know, the submission, it looked that way, but I didn't do the math, so.
Yeah, no, I, I did, I, uh, and in doing, you know, in looking at the area before we looked at the permit, it did look rather large, particularly the scale and the hand drawn. I mean, if you look at the hand drawing, it's clearly not to scale. That's what prompted me to do the math, because the shed looks almost as large as the house.
Yes, nowhere near the size.
Look, you know, and, and the other thing is, I did look at the aerial photos of the neighborhood, it would, you know, um, it is, most of the homes are the same style home, they do not have a shed as large as that in the backyard. And then just, 'cause I think you mentioned this before, it sort of prompted a discussion, 'cause if you look at the existing street view on Google Maps from June of last year, you can see that there was a vehicle, some vehicle, signs of vehicle going over the grass. So I, I reached out to engineering, um, just to see if they regulated that, and they do, and so they did have a conversation.
Yeah, we talked on Monday.
Um, and I do have an email that does document what the applicant said that he would, and I can read it, for the record.
Sure.
But, um, it's from John Mills, so John Mills was the person who sent the letter, and it says, uh, this is from, I think it's from you, Mr.?
Yeah.
Silva, right?
Yeah.
Uh, says, hello, we talked this morning, just following up with these notes. I bought a house last year, cleared a bunch of trees in the backyard, I drove trucks on the, on the side road, on that side road, I mean, I think he means on that side of the house.
Yep.
For access. I haven't driven on the side yard in over seven months, planning on getting a shed in the backyard and will plant grass when all that is completed, hopefully by May. Uh, new shed will store my jet ski and also personal belongings. I will drive on the grass maybe once a month to access the jet ski. I also wanted to request adding a light pole, adding a light on the city pole in my driveway. My road is very dark at night and I have a fear of getting the pole a bright light, um, for help. Well, it says, what?
Yeah, I didn't check, I got too, too quick.
So I, I think that's important, just that there is a statement with the application that it's not gonna be used for regular vehicular use. Um, and you know, it did prompt an interesting conversation about curbs and parking on grass. It's, uh, you know, a conversation for another day, but it, you know, there is in fact a prohibition to doing that, so.
Thank you, 'cause you've gotten into my next, that was my next question for you, because I saw your comments in your memorandum regarding the tracks that have been left there. So, thank you very much, both of you.
Yes, Peter?
Oh, you just mentioned in the letter that he said, once a month? You said it's only gonna be in the winter.
But now, yeah, now I changed my mind, I was like, I'm not gonna use it, I'm figured now I'll use my main garage for the jet ski. So that changed, uh, last night, after I wrote that, 'cause today's Tuesday.
So you don't plan on doing repetitive access through, through the lawn?
Nope, maybe like once in a while, like nothing crazy. And if I have to, I'll go on my yard, not the, the right of way, but I don't know why I would do that, but.
The other question I had is, uh, as noted here, uh, on the staff report, the minimum five feet. How, how accurate do you know your property line? Are you gonna be able to put that accurately at five feet? 'Cause that's, that's, that's pretty close, and a lot of people miss that.
No, I do, yeah.
And end up getting too close to the property line, which then it would be illegal.
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about that, 'cause right now I have a fence, I'm gonna tear it down, 'cause the fence is the property line, I know that pretty accurately. And then if I have to, I'll get a survey, 'cause that's not a big deal. I'm not worried about getting it. If anything, I'll do six feet, some over the threshold.
'Cause one of the conditions could be that, you know, you have to ensure it's five feet.
Yeah, you can.
So whatever you have to do to do that, you know?
Yeah.
You'll, you'll have to look into that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I have stakes in the back of the yard, so there's probably a stake in the side showing where my property line is, you know, from the original survey, so I'm sure I can find a stake.
All right. Great. Question for you, the?
Yep.
The, uh, looking at the plot plan that you submitted?
Yeah.
Um, so when you do, on those occasions, when you move the jet ski in or out of the new proposed shed?
Yep.
How would you, how, how do you do that? Do you need to pull it on a truck? Do you load it on a truck? How, how does that work?
Yeah, it's on a trailer.
So, so basically, do you drive your truck back to the?
If I have to, I mean, if I really have to, I use my quad to pull it, and that's not gonna leave no tire marks at all.
And, and what's the, so the, to the right of your house, looking from the street, what, that's partial grass right now?
No, I have full grass. What you're looking at is my neighbor's driveway. Their driveway is like a little bit of grass and they have a driveway in front of it. So, if that's what you're looking at, that's not from me. My driveway, my thing right now is just all grass.
You're the black truck in the picture?
Yeah, that's my setup, like driveway.
So the, so what I'm looking at with the, to the right of your house, it looks like it's bare without?
That's, that's their driveway, they use that to get into their driveway.
Little confused.
Did you see that picture?
Yeah.
If you look at the Google Earth one, yeah.
Yeah, let me just show him first, so he can.
Sure.
Here, I'll be right. Sorry, Peter. This is what they're, this is what they have in front of us.
Yeah, so what I'm saying right here, that's for me, but that's like not mine if they're pointing at that. 'Cause my grass is just, I can't grow it yet, 'cause I don't wanna grow. I tried growing it last summer, but it wouldn't take.
Okay. We just, yeah.
But you've got, you've got 15 feet to the right of your house till you hit the property line with that neighbor?
Yeah, I have 15 feet, that's what the plot plan says, yeah.
Good.
I'm good.
I'm good, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Need any other questions at this point from the commission? If not, let's see, anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this application? Anyone in the public who'd like to speak in this application? Last call, anybody in the public who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any more commission questions? Staff, do you have anything? Dave?
Uh, I do not.
Okay. Um, just to clarify, so what we're looking at is what looks like tire tracks or some bare spots?
Yeah, like.
Fifteen-foot?
Yep.
Access way?
Yeah, 'cause when I bought the house, that was all like overgrown landscaping, so there was never anything there anyways. It was just a mess, so we tore it all out. And I just, I'm not gonna grow grass, I'm done doing the backyard stuff. So I'll do the shed first, then whip my way out, and then it'll be all grass. It just, that soil kinda sucks for growing grass, too, I've learned. It won't stick.
All right, um, as, as Commissioner?
This is his truck?
Yes, that's what he said. As Commissioner Lambrouney said, it's, you know, extremely important, obviously, that ?
Yeah.
When you construct this, that you comply with the, with the five feet?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
From the property line and?
Yeah.
And confirm that you're in the right place, um, because I believe the building department is gonna look at it again, you know, at the, at the end.
I'm not worried, yeah. I'll make sure that everything is all safe.
Yes.
I'm just curious, why are you putting it five feet away? Why don't you go a little, little more, so you, you're, you're well assured that you're not gonna be?
Yeah.
Relating anything? I mean, I'm not sure why, why not seven feet, or eight feet, or nine feet?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll probably do six feet, 'cause I just wanna keep pushing my yard smaller and smaller, you know, 'cause behind the shed is just gonna be useless space now anyways. So I do eight feet, that whole side is just gonna be dead. I want some backyard.
Okay.
Yes.
Just curiosity, how big is that space between the edge of your house and your other neighbor's property line there?
Oh, like the front?
Where there's no grass there, like about how wide is that?
Oh, that's fif- 15 feet.
So that whole thing is 15 feet? Okay, right there, yeah, okay.
Yeah. The whole backyard is like, I think, 100 feet, that area is 15.
Okay.
75 is the back.
75, yeah. It seems like it's bigger now that I, I leveled it a little bit.
All right, if, if there are no more, do you have anything further you'd like to say before we close the hearing?
No, I just, I watched all the videos like the last few weeks, you guys are a lot of fun to watch. I like all the opinions you have, you know?
Really?
Like, I like you the most, like, you're really nice. I don't know your name, Peter? Like, you're really fun to watch. Like, we watched them all last week, like, it was a lot of fun watching the videos.
That is people watching.
It was our longest hearing in, that was the longest one in a while.
Famous, are we influencers now?
So, would anybody like to make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved to close.
Peter?
Second.
Second, Tony, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and would someone like to make a motion on the application?
I'll move to, uh, accept the application, uh, with, with, with a couple of different provisos here, uh, as noted by staff comments. Uh, first of all, uh, ensure that, uh, the location of the shed will be, uh, five feet minimum to the sideline, uh, take whatever appropriate action you have to do to do that. Uh, and, uh, let's include a statement that the structure is to be used as a shed solely and not as a garage. So if in the future, uh, you change your mind, you're gonna have to come back and ask us to, uh, to do that. So this is just, just for, for storage as a shed. And, um, what's the height of the shed? Not to exceed, well, not to exceed 18 feet. Yeah, not to exceed 18 feet. The shed is not to exceed 18 feet, would be the third condition.
Right, which is essentially just the, the one and three are basically just reciting what the zoning regulations?
Right.
Require. And, and by the way, Dave, the, the five-foot minimum is not just from the side, but it's also from the rear, is that correct?
Correct. That is correct, but if you look at the plot plan, I would, uh, right, they're showing 20 feet.
Right, right.
Plenty of room.
So I think, you know, not less than five feet from the side.
Yep.
Um, that would be the?
Okay.
Closer consideration, I would think, to 20 feet, um.
Well, it should be, it should be not less than five feet from any property line, right?
Right.
That should be the condition, right?
Correct, but I would generally say, you could say something, you know, go to, choose a different direction if you want, but if, if I were to go out and check this, after it's approved, I would expect to measure 20 feet from the back and approximately five from the side, just because that's what we're being shown to approve. So if we're?
Okay.
If we're, if we're giving the applicant the discretion to be within five feet of the rear, too, please let me know if that's the intent of the motion. Otherwise, I would assume that he's gonna be 20 feet from the rear and not less than five, not, not closer than five from the side.
So, so Peter, do you wanna just say that, you know, as, not to be closer than 20 feet from the rear or five feet from the side as shown on the plan?
Well, since we closed the meeting and we're not gonna have a discussion over it, and this is what he presented, so let's, let's do that.
Yeah, just as, yeah, so motion to approve as presented with the distances from the property lines as shown and the three, um, conditions that you stated?
Right.
Second?
And I guess, as, as you suggested, you know, it's up to him, but he might give consideration at least to making it five and a half or six feet, but that's not absolutely required.
Correct.
Okay, so sorry, we had the motion and the second.
I second.
Tom, okay, is any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Application is approved. Um, so for the next one, were we gonna, Paul will sit and Anna will sit as the two alternates? Okay.
Joe, I can ask questions, though, am I right?
Uh, yes, you can ask questions, and then when we get to the deliberations that we
I just wanted to make clear, I just wanted to be clear.
Yep, okay. All right, so this one, I'll ask you to state your name and address and then review with us what it is you're proposing to do. And I should say, before you start, I should have just referenced the fact that this is a public hearing, 2202-25 Tesla care of Scott Austin, seeking special permit for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations at 1267 to 1319 Silastine Highway.
One second, Scott, just bear with us.
Yeah, no worries. I appreciate that.
Can I have that picture back here?
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Scott Austin. I work on the charging team at Tesla, and I'm here to present our sixteen post electric vehicle charging station to be installed at the Gulfbrook Shop of Weathersfield at 1267 Silastine Highway. This is just kind of a brief overview of the property. We will be positioned on the south side, close to where the, the Doro marketplace is, is located.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Could, could you go through that again? I, I was trying to figure out exactly where they're going to be.
Yep.
So it's, it's where you're showing it right there?
Yep.
Or is it on the other side?
It's, it's, it'll be behind the curb. I don't know if you can see my, my little hand here.
Yeah, I see it.
Right here.
Are those sixteen spaces there?
Yes, yes, sir. We'll use up seventeen spaces. We're going to have one stall lost due to the handicap parking space that we're creating.
Okay.
And are the front portions of each of those spaces right on the property line?
It's pretty close to the property line, yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, this is existing conditions, and we're, we're essentially converting eighteen existing parking spaces into sixteen charge stalls with one non-charging stall kind of in the middle, just due to the, to where the drainage gate's located. We couldn't put a charge post on top of that, so sixteen total DC fast charging posts with one stall loss due to the, due to the ADA space. You can see that we're positioning the, the large charging equipment and utility infrastructure kind of off to the right here in, in this existing landscaped area with the sixteen charge posts kind of off to the, to the west from that. Each charging post will be enabled to charge up to 250 kilowatts, both Tesla and non-Tesla vehicles. They will not be dedicated to EV charging, parking only. The only signage that we'll have on the site is for, for the handicap parking space.
So, so a customer to the liquor store could, is not going to get towed or anything if they park in one of these spaces?
Correct. Yes, yes, sir. They will not. There would be no towing. We won't, we won't have any, any of that type of signage located on site.
Can I just ask, what's the, what's the typical charge time for what you've described?
Yeah, so typical charge time would be between twenty and thirty minutes. A, a vehicle can charge from, let's say, five percent from empty to, we consider eighty percent full in about twenty-five minutes. We don't recommend that they stay longer than eighty percent charged because it takes about twenty-five minutes to go from eighty percent to a hundred percent. And then, you know, most people just go, charge up to what they need and then take off, which is about twenty to thirty minutes' time. In terms of screening of our mechanical equipment, we plan to utilize some shrubs. Like, we call out some green mountain boxwoods. They're about two to three feet wide and they grow about six foot tall. We have them kind of interspersed between some, some bollards here to protect, to protect the equipment from vehicle traffic.
How, how tall is the equipment?
Yeah, so the, the charge posts themselves are approximately six and a half feet tall and about two and a half feet wide. The charge cabinets, they're about, oh geez, anyone have a, eighty-nine and a half inches tall? Let's say about seventy inches tall. Yeah, about, I don't know.
Seven and a half feet.
So the, the ones you're screening with the shrubs, shrubs are seven, seven and a half feet tall?
Uh, yes, sir.
The, the, the utility equipment that's in that right corner?
Right, the utility, the utility transformer won't be as tall. It's just bulkier. I don't, you
Can you just point to where the new shrubs will be again?
Yep, so all of these identifiers here, that's, that's the, the shrubs that we'll use for screening.
And how, how big are they at the time they're planted initially?
Um, I, I don't know. They'll be, they won't be the full size. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not completely sure on that, sir. I apologize.
When, when you reference the height, is that their height at maturity that you
Yes, sir.
Which was how tall?
About two, two to three feet wide and about six feet tall.
And how much space is there between them?
Yeah, let's see. Approximately six and a half feet spacing.
So basically, they'll, they'll end up as a continuous row eventually?
That's the goal, yes, sir.
And then what about somebody looking in from the direction of the Silastine Highway? Is there screening?
The highway is, is, is along this section.
Right.
And they'll be kind of blocked by the existing traffic infrastructure that's there on the corner. And we're kind of up against the traffic easement, so we, we didn't necessarily want to plant, plantings in between because we still wanted to provide access for the utility to get access to their transformer and to, you know, not to impede on the, on the traffic easement there as well. Yep. And so for reference, we're looking at, we're, we'll be right here.
Does it look like in your drawing that that tree, it looked like a tree was going to be removed?
Yes, sir. The, our initial plan was to use, utilize some existing parking spaces for the equipment, but the property owner would prefer that we just remove the tree and utilize that, that area right there.
Can you go back and show that tree in the picture?
Yes, sir. It's right here.
Why did the property owner insist on that?
He would prefer to keep all of the parking, as many parking stalls as he can and not lose those.
Well, there'll be, uh, uh, not a substitution, but a, a, a secondary planting in that area for trees or shrubs to provide screening?
Yes, sir. Yep, we intend to plant approximately nine, nine shrubs that would turn into smaller trees around the, around the equipment to, to assist in the screening. I'm not sure how well you can see these, but the, this is, these are all the intended plantings.
Good question.
Sure. And point again to the existing tree on this?
Right, yes, the, the existing tree is right here.
And just out of curiosity, when, if you were to move that equipment into the row of parking, how many spaces would you end up losing?
He'd lose approximately three spaces.
And you'd end up with how many charging stations?
Uh, still sixteen. Yeah, still sixteen.
So Dave, on that point, is this getting close at all to parking requirements? I mean, if they were to lose three, is that a problem?
So I would have to look at that. So the way I was approaching this is that they're not losing any, because I was told that they, it is parking for anyone. They're not restricted to electric vehicle charging. So the only space that's being lost is one. So I, I would have to go ahead and look, but I know that there was just a parking analysis done for Dutch Point, and they still had excess parking, so.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Right, they're putting a new, some new, a new building right on the side?
Right, right.
Gotcha.
And another related question, Dave, is, is that tree that they're removing, does that enter in to whatever the parking lot landscape requirements are in terms of, you know, islands and vegetation and so forth?
So that, that tree was part of the Doro marketplace landscaping plan, and, and one of the reasons this before you tonight has a special permit is because of those types of questions, so.
So the, the big tree that we're looking at is being removed?
Well, that's not necessarily an island, so I would have to, um.
But was that tree installed for the Doro project?
I think it, I'll double check. I don't want, I don't want to be
Looks like it's been there a while.
Right, right. I think it was part of the original plaza, so I wouldn't, I don't want to speak without looking at the landscaping plan, but.
There was, there was a stump kind of next to it for some, for a tree that was potentially removed as well.
Could you go back to, to the area that shows the size of the tree?
You know how tall it is roughly? There you go.
There you go. A nice tree.
Pretty tall, yeah. I guess I, I'll, there. And then can, is the curb line changing at all that we see right there into the mulch?
Gotcha.
The last parking space, is that remaining?
This, this curb line will remain.
Yeah, and the, the one up, up
And this one, this curb line will remain with the exception of where the handicap stall is located. We create, we create clearance space so that somebody in a wheelchair could, you know, could wheel around and, and get access.
The existing curb on the row of parking closest to the Silastine Highway stays where it is?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah. I guess I'm just gonna, from, from my standpoint, I really would hate to see that tree lost because this is a sea of asphalt in this parking lot, and that's a pretty nice tree when you're, and it's really in the one direction that people are looking when they're driving down the Silastine Highway.
I agree. I, I think it would be a detriment to this area to remove that tree. It's probably been there, what, ten years? It looks, it looks big.
And you would get the sixteen spaces by, or sixteen charging spaces by just pushing it down a little bit?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
With the, with the loss of three, with a net loss of three spaces?
Correct.
So your, would your equipment be where you're showing the handicap space?
Correct. Essentially, we would shift everything over to the left and, and, and property owner just really didn't want to lose those spaces.
Did you happen to look at any of the prior approvals to see what the surplus parking count was for this site overall?
I had not. I knew there was just multiple, there's like, there was multiple projects ongoing
Right.
with this one as well, so I knew it would be, there'd be some flex there in, in terms of that count.
Yeah, and I guess, I, I don't know, but my, I'm not sure now with Doro there if it's different, but I guess my perception is it doesn't seem like that outer row is the most heavily used parking in that plaza from what I've driven by.
And I was going to actually disagree because we always use that when we go, and I know it's not owned by the same group, when we go to the, the market across, or the Calhoun or on.
Right.
We always park there because it's safer to be able to back in and out of.
Yep.
To the end.
Yeah, there you go. But, but if you can still park there, I mean, I, I probably wouldn't park in front of a charger because I wouldn't take charger space from someone who's definitely need it.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I actually had two questions. Did you consider other places within that parking lot? And there is another Tesla station less than a mile away that I've never once seen it car parked at. So what is the business reason for putting this in if you thought one less than a mile away in Rocky Hill at the poles that no one has ever used? Well, I mean, maybe somebody's used it.
Yeah, no.
I've never seen it.
Yeah, Rocky Hill, that gets good utilization.
Really? I've never seen it.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a Tesla?
Yeah.
Yep, it's, I think we got twelve, twelve chargers there. This one would actually relieve that site because we do see some pretty good utilization there. And essentially, we build for peak, so during the holiday season, you'd see, certainly see more, or weekends, you'd certainly see more traffic there. We did, we have looked at other locations on this property. The biggest limiting factor for this property is access to, to Eversource utilities. And with, and with the, the, let me show you here, it might be easier. And so Eversource utility line runs on the opposite side of the, the highway, and so we have to extend an overhead line, and our goal is to, to, to get in between these existing trees and to not affect those, to bring utilities over. And you can see there's an existing pole here that they did just that. And we initially wanted to put them here, but we, we thought there would be a high risk of, of damaging any of these mature trees, as well as just not being able to get access to another, another pole line without removing existing trees along the street.
And can you go down further, yeah?
Which led us down here, which, you know, removed that, that issue with the mature trees along that edge. And we, we, we feel confident in discussions with Eversource that they can, that they can get between these two trees to bring in another overhead line.
Without damaging?
Without damaging any of those existing trees along the street.
I guess another, you're, you're proposing sixteen charging stations, but I guess another question for you would be if you did, I'm not sure if sixteen is a, is a magic number, but if hypothetically you did fifteen or fourteen, would that result in no lost spaces or just, you know, one or two as opposed to three?
Yeah, so we're, we're kind of stuck with multiples of four, just based on the, the architecture of the equipment itself. And so we would, if we reduce the, the size of the site, it would just make it financially infeasible to build the site at all. So sixteen is kind of that magic number where we can justify the financial cost to, to put in those chargers while also relieving Rocky Hill, for instance.
And are you, are you entering into a lease agreement with the owner of the plaza to be able to have those charging stations?
Yes, sir. Yep.
What are the hours of operation?
Yeah, so our, our site would be open twenty-four seven.
Yeah, that was one thing I was, when I was looking at it, I said, okay, fine. Say I'm coming to the hotel across the street, get about, in the two in the morning, I want to come over and charge my car. I saw no task lighting on the pumps. What?
Yeah, so it's different than like a gas station. So there, there is lighting at the charge handle, and all the, the customer would have to do is get out, unhook the charge handle and plug it in. There's no payment kiosk or anything like that.
So they're using their own headlights to light the pump and see the controls and everything?
So there is a, there is a slight LED light where the charge handle's located. There's, essentially all they do is just unhook it, and there's not, there's not much to go on after that.
I'm shocked the state hasn't put a, a, a foot candle requirement overall over these, like they do the gas pumps.
And, and we do have light poles specified here that we tend to install as well.
Where are those?
Yep, so we have this one here, and that should provide enough lighting to illuminate this front area. And there's an existing light pole down here.
And, and is the, the new one going in?
The existing light pole might be off, off. That's why I asked the question.
Gotcha, yeah. And that's why we bring our own lights as well, just because we don't, we don't know if they intend to turn their lights off at night for whatever reason. Ours will be on at nighttime.
I know you can make a reservation on your Tesla app
Gotcha.
and arrive and the pump's precharged for your, for when you get there.
Sure.
Paul?
Can a normal car, can say someone owns a Benz or a BMW, can they use the Tesla app and make a reservation?
They sure can, yep. So if they have a CCS plug, which is, if it's not a, if it's not a Tesla plug, it's typically a CCS plug, with the exception of the Nissan Leaf, which still has the old, we call them Chadmo plugs.
Because I know they make the adapters.
Right, so, so they, they can, the CCS plugs can charge, and then we have a pretty good commitment from, from those manufacturers that they'll transition to the Tesla plug within the next couple of years, so everybody will be on the same standard.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the, the issue of the screening, the, and the landscaping, would you be amenable to working with the town planner and town staff to work up a, you know, a landscaping plan for that particular corner if that tree's going to be lost? There should be something that goes into there that winds up being just as attractive and just as effective in terms of, you know, the attractiveness of the site and the screening of, of the site that's provided by Mother Nature's Greenery.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that could be, you know, worked out as a substitute for this existing tree.
Absolutely. We'd love to present what, you know, our landscaping plan to the town planner and have them approve it before we install it.
I would think, I would think you would have to come up with something that, you know, is at least equivalent in terms of attractiveness and coverage as that current tree that, that I think presents, you know, an obstacle in terms of our review.
Sure.
Second issue that I thought of as I was reviewing your proposal, it's not addressed at all, and that is the issue of security, particularly in view of some of the various nefarious activities that are being taken by members of the public in reaction to the current activities of the principal of your corporation and the public reaction to his activities bringing about making Tesla infrastructure, a, infrastructure and vehicles a target for, let's say, illegal protest.
Sure.
What, what are your security arrangements for this?
Yeah, so we'll have cameras installed, at least for Tesla vehicles, if they're charging and they can report incidents through the, through the vehicle UI. We also, you know, recommend that they call 911 if there's an emergency that, that's ongoing at the site. But if there's nobody there, we'll have cameras. The sites are monitored 24/7/365. We have teams available 24/7/365 to respond in the event that there's an incident such as
So you've got basically CCTV full-time there with the remote monitoring?
Yes, sir.
What about lighting?
Lighting, yep. Well, so we'll have, we propose a, a new dual fixture light at the site with, in addition to what's already existing, but our dual fixture light should, should be able to supply enough lighting for the
And will that, will that, yeah, that was the question, will that lighting be adequate to light up that area so that anyone that's conducting nefarious activity there can be readily observed and seen from, you know, the current knowledge you have as well as passersby?
Well, it, it'll be, it's hard to, it's hard to judge how much lighting is enough lighting to illuminate something criminal trying to commit, an activity of violence or something, but it'll be enough lighting to provide safety for people looking to, to park and charge and
Yeah, there are cameras that can make up for that, you know, infrared or high illuminated type camera lenses, et cetera. So I'm not so much concerned about that.
Gotcha.
It's just, and also want to make sure there's not too much lighting there that creates a, a, a distraction and basically makes that site flooded with far too much light.
Right, no, I, we totally agree. You know, we, we want the site to be safe. We want people to feel welcome to come and, and utilize the site, you know, free will, and we don't want anybody to feel threatened to come and, and, and charge their vehicles.
A question for our town planner. With respect to the issue of the tree and, and a substitute landscaping plan, would you be comfortable in terms of working with and reviewing the plans of the applicant to make up for any potential loss of that particular tree or any foliage that would be disturbed or removed or lost as a consequence of the installation?
So I generally would, and I appreciate the vote of confidence that I could do that, and I'm sure that I can and would, but it is a technical application, and the town engineer was actually much more involved with reviewing the plans than I am. So while I'm confident we could come up with the tree, I would prefer that we come back to you, both myself, we could work with the applicant, myself and the town engineer, make sure we're comfortable with the proposal, and then just come back to you with a final proposal because we
So that would mean, that's sort of what you're proposing, is maybe postpone a decision for tonight, hold the hearing over for, and, you know, a
Continue the public hearing.
Right, continue it to the next date or date thereafter.
And the reason being, yes, the answer's yes, and the reason being is because just by way of background, so this application was originally being discussed when Justin LaFountain was the town planner, and at the time, as you know, the town of Weathersfield does not have regulations that acknowledge electric vehicle charging, but the legislature passed the law that requires 10% of new commercial developments, or I'm sorry, for new commercial developments to have charging for at least 10% of the vehicles. And so Justin and Dominic, I think at the time, said, let's handle this administratively. I did look into it administratively, and because all of the other uses in this plaza are permitted by special permit, while I was comfortable approving it as a minor site plan modification, I thought it'd be best to come, everything else is permitted by special permit, and because there's no regulations, I thought there's no better body to approve it than the full commission. So I would propose that I come back to you with a plan that I've worked with the applicant and the town engineer to come up with and present that to you to and the town engineer to come up with and present that to you at a future meeting.
Yeah, I saw, I read your special permit analysis in your memo, and I tended to agree with your thinking on that.
Thank you.
Paul?
Back, earlier question that got raised was really good. 16 stations, I think, at Kohl's in Rocky Hill. How many other Tesla charging stations are in Weathersfield that you know of?
There's none other in Weathersfield.
Okay, so I think, my personal view is, I think charging stations are a good thing. I think they drive economic activity. It draws people to this plaza, particularly in its proximity to 91. So I think if we can figure out a way to make it happen this, and then learn how to do it other places in town, I think that would be a good thing for the commission.
Yes, Peter.
Could I go back and just ask again about siting? I understand your logic for sitting it here as opposed to the other side because of the electrical connection and the trees. But, you know, honestly, I think Tracy alluded to it. I go to Doros quite a bit, and on the weekends, that area is packed. So, you know, I'm just wondering, could you put it somewhere else? I just think that's a bad area because of the number of people that go to Doros. It's very popular. And I just see it's going to be a competition for people wanting to charge and people wanting to park. Obviously, you know, after Doros closes, it's not a problem. So I don't know if you've done any analysis on the competition between the ongoing operations and the, you know, the parking requirement for when people normally go and charge their cars. But I just bring that up because I am very familiar with that particular area, and it's busy.
Yeah, no, we do look at that, and we would prefer, obviously, we would not want, we would want those stalls to be open and utilized.
Right.
Right, so I think it's sort of a balance of access to the existing infrastructure, the power, you know, we're sort of balancing that against how full the site's going to be utilized with other vehicles using the parking lot. And from Tesla's standpoint, we're willing to take that risk just to have the site there, just to provide EV charging enabled for electric vehicles, why they utilize those amenities there.
For example, if you go, I'm not sure what direction that is, but if you go to the other, there's six or seven or eight spaces to my left.
North is up, Peter.
Yep, this is north.
North is up?
Yep.
So it would be east.
East?
I'm sorry, west. It would be west, right there, right there. So there's a bunch of spaces there, and there's a bunch more over there. That's much less used. Why not put something there?
Yeah, so-
And carry your power across that way.
Yeah, the longer those distances are, it gets exponentially more expensive to build, and it's, you know, we're kind of also stuck to where the property owner wants us. He doesn't necessarily want to give up these parking stalls. You know, he kind of stuck us into this area here.
Chris, so a couple of questions. Can you describe the aesthetics of the cabinet itself?
Yeah.
Because I haven't seen any, like, color pictures in the operation.
Sure, yeah, they're just, they're white. They're just white cabinets.
Okay.
They're all just painted, just like a flat white.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is just because, like, maybe it's a question for you, David. I know we don't have necessarily all the details of a Silasstein plan, but when we did the updates for anything around City Hall here with the Eastmans, it was all black cabinets and everything, around the light poles and everything. So I'm thinking sort of long-term what that might look like.
Right, and how visible are they going to be from the road, et cetera? What are they going to look like?
If we decided at some point, you know, 10 years from now, as we're working on a Silasstein master plan, we want all black light poles and fixtures along Silasstein Highway.
Well, you make a good point, and I did not, there are going to be logos. I did not think of these as either a sign or an architectural element. That would otherwise have gone to the design review committee, but you're bringing up a good point that maybe they should.
Well, that's kind of what I'm wondering, is part of the reason that this is a better spot is also because of visibility.
Yeah, I mean, we would like to minimize this visibility as much as possible, and I think that's why we included those landscape shrubs.
I just meant, sort of, the visibility of a Tesla-specific charging station that close to the road, is that part of the consideration?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Chris, are you talking about the piece on the end there, on the far right, or are you talking about the pumps themselves?
I mean, technically, the pumps, they're reddish, right? They're kind of-
Yeah, no, they're all white. The logo that lights up, it's just a small LED light.
Okay.
And that'll be red.
But I was thinking, I was specifically asking about the utility cabinet that's near the road, where they were talking about.
And I thought he was asking about the individual posts and whether they have lettering names, insignias, et cetera.
Like this.
Right, yep. So here's an example of the ADA stall.
Yep, so they do say, yeah.
So is that, so basically, there'd be 16 of those?
Yes, sir.
And how tall are those, did you say?
About six and a half feet, about two and a half feet wide.
Yeah, I mean, I think whether that is signage, I think, is a question. And I guess if I might add a couple more things, I mean, I think, as Dave said, every use in this center, the center itself is a special permit use, and to me, we have to, I think, consider just how might change, whoops, how this might change the use patterns of the parking lot, both from a perspective of whether it ultimately is going to interfere with people having enough and convenient parking to serve the uses that are already here and not detract from those in a negative way. And I guess the second thing I'm now thinking of is if it's literally 24 hours a day, safety, you know, is it going to be attracting a lot of people to the site that otherwise is closed at 3:00 in the morning? And do we feel that that's an appropriate thing, or is that, you know, too intense? Is it appropriate for the area? Et cetera. One other thing, I guess I just wanted to add, is are there any, in our regulations, required setbacks for parking spaces specifically from a property line? And then I guess number two would be those Tesla, you know, those larger vertical things that we're looking at at each station. We talked about whether that constitutes signage, and number two would be, you know, is that, are those things in any way subject to a setback from a third-party property line as a structure of some kind? Because there may be a difference between just an asphalt parking space at grade versus starting to install things potentially? I mean, whether this is viewed as differently than a lighting pole, for example?
Those are all good questions, and I apologize, I don't have the answer, and I don't want to misspeak, so I'd rather look at it. In terms of the parking stall location and the distance, it's an existing site, so quite honestly, I didn't even look, I didn't even look to see if there was, if we were, you know, there was a setback for the parking, for the property line. So that I didn't look at, and I'm not sure how to treat the charging posts themselves.
Whether you treat each, you know, whether it's the lettering on each one that counts towards signage? I know there is a master signage plan, I think, for this plaza that has certain-
It just was updated, actually.
Yeah, style and stuff like that. But I guess another question I have for the applicant is, do you have data at the Kohl's area in Rocky Hill that would tell you, you know, what, does it tell you how many cars a day you typically get? Does it tell you how many cars you get between midnight and 5:00 AM, those types of data points?
Yes, yep. We can generally describe the charging behavior of the users at the charging station.
I think that would also be relevant, at least from my thought process, to how this would work, and can we expect to have 30 cars there, you know, at 3:00 AM every morning? But Dave, were you going to say?
That was a question I had. What term of the 18, just square footage available, or is it based on the number of cars in the area that would possibly be serviced? Because I know up in, on Maple Street in Rocky Hill, they have like a whole bunch from, yet you go over in East Hartford, there's like four, you go another place, there's one. And I'm just, is it all based on demographic of cars or the possible growth?
So Connecticut's actually an interesting study for that, because it was one of the first states where we put our first supercharging station, and we had two. I think that was, I think it's in Greenwich, and then in Milford, there's another, like two. This one will be the, you know, as we upgrade the technologies, we're at the point where we can install in multiples of four versus one or two. And so maybe some of those stations that had four, or is the earlier variants of the technology, or this would be the latest and greatest, which is, which kind of opens it up to being able to charge both Tesla and non-Tesla vehicles. And so to talk to how we choose the stall counts, it's based on the traffic at nearby locations and the utilization amount, and what we expect the need to, as the need grows. And we're also trying to include the behavior of both Tesla and non-Tesla vehicles, because we're opening it to all manufacturers. And so we expect that there to be a need, and, you know, 16 was what they spit out to us in terms of financial viability, the expected need for here, you know, and, you know, it growth into the future. And so we do try to build for peaks. You know, we don't, the last thing we'd want is for people to have to wait in a line to charge their vehicle when they expect the charging station to be open and readily available. So we build for those peaks, you know, Labor Day weekends, Memorial Weekend, you know, traffic days and stuff like that.
If you could delve into a technological issue that kind of relates to, you know, the length of time to charge, and that then relates to frequency of use and the intensity of the use of a particular site. I recently heard, or believe I heard, a report on NPR indicating that there have been battery developments by one manufacturer that could essentially receive a full charge in 30 seconds as opposed to the amount of time that you're indicating. Assuming that, you know, technology like that comes to pass within a reasonable short time, like within the next five, 10 years, do you anticipate that to be becoming as a factor, and is that a limiting factor for these charging stations? That is, they can only handle so many, you know, energy transfers at a time, or can they be boosted? Or is, my understanding, the problem is in the batteries of the receptacle vehicle, not the charging station? That's the limiting factor in terms of the amount of time it takes to charge? If you can, can you elaborate on that if you have any information?
I'm not aware of the validity of being able to charge with that new battery technology. That would be awesome if that was available. Yeah, so the charging limits is sort of based on the battery technology. You know, we, you don't want to charge the vehicle at full blast the whole time because that would damage the battery. So there's a constant handshake between the equipment and the battery to make sure that it's getting the proper charge rate. So there is some future-proofing built into the technology. And then, starting next year, we've got another version of the technology that would, you know, kind of charge things even faster.
So you're basically planning for updating these stations almost on an annual basis, or even more frequently, depending upon the technological advances?
So the hardware is capable of doing more than it's currently doing, and so some of that future-proofing is already built into the technology. But this, once this site's built, it's sort of, you know, the hardware is there. We are going around and upgrading some of those first version sites and, you know, version two sites as it becomes necessary to do so. But I wouldn't expect us to be out here every year swapping out hardware.
Because that then has an impact upon the concern that was being expressed around the podium here for the intensity of the, you know, each charging site and the amount of parking that this function would take away from the basic business function of the, you know, that the lot is serving.
Sure, I would expect 20 to 30-minute charge times for both Tesla and non-Tesla vehicles, and those people aren't just going to be standing in their cars. They're going to utilize the shopping center, go into Doros, hopefully, and patronizing the businesses there. We want people to do that.
And you, repeating what you've indicated, my understanding is that these stations are regular parking spaces that will be available for use as parking, not just for recharging?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Chairman, I have a question. So I want to just kind of probe a little bit on your economic point here. You've said a number of times that the reason it's 16 is you've got to do in multiples of four, and it's economically feasible at 16. Why not 12? Can you tell us that 12 would be a failure of this project, or is that just a sense that you have?
12 would fail on the utilization metric. We need 16 because there's a growth need for 16. We feel that the site would be utilized at 16. 12 would, we would, we call them waiters. 12 could potentially generate waiters where people are waiting to charge. Where 16, we feel it's, not only is it kind of future-proof for future growth, but it helps relieve sites like Rocky Hill.
I guess my point is there's zero in this parking lot now.
Yep.
So if we were amenable to 12, would that be an issue for you?
That would be an issue, yes, sir.
That would kill this project?
That would kill this project.
Okay. The other question is time. So you've got 24/7, and you've heard some concerns of this commission that geez, you'd be charging 3:00 AM in the morning and got safety and security and all that. Can you limit when the things can charge?
We can, but we would also, we would advocate that this, we would consider this critical infrastructure. If somebody's stranded at 3:00 AM and need a charge, we don't want them to not be able to charge because its site's closed.
Are all your sites 24/7?
Yes, sir.
One other kind of technological feature. These are all, are these all self-charging stations? That is, the customer comes in with his or her vehicle, does, you know, basically plugs into, plugs in the charging station to the vehicle, and basically like a self-serve gas station pump? That's the way it's handled, it's not an attendant?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so it's all self-serve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
I do have a quick question about kind of this, when you're looking at the, I guess I'll call the island where they all are, right? And in the picture, it shows that there's no curb between the parking space and the charging box that says Tesla. Do you run into problems with people like smashing into them with their cars? I mean, I have, I've seen people go over these curbs because they just don't even see them in their cars sometimes. It's not very tall there.
Right.
Would you need to put in a bigger curb?
Put the bollards in.
Oh, okay, so there's, so, all right.
You can't run it over.
Right.
That was my big concern, that people would not-
It happens, but we find that it's, it happens very rarely.
What did he say?
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, you know, backing up, are they going to back right into it? Because the bollard's on the side.
Is the bollard in the front? Is that what you guys are saying? I'm not following.
Yeah, so I'm not showing the bollard included on this post, but we can include a bollard, you know, on the front side.
I just, my question is more, is that something that you normally do?
No, well, no, we-
You're willing to take the risk.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. It doesn't happen too often, but it does happen. It's just, we're willing to take that risk and not include the bollards. Yeah, it doesn't happen enough for us to, unless it's required.
Cars nowadays stop you before you hit anything.
Correct, yep.
I don't know, like, it's just layers like-
We do, yep. So we do, we monitor these 24/7. We know exactly when sites are down, and we have teams to respond very quickly to open them back up.
Yep.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Sure.
I don't own a Tesla or electric vehicle yet, just so I know how this works when we talk about the charge. You pull in, you use the app, you locate the charging station, you pay by a credit card to charge the vehicle, basically is how this works.
Yes, sir. There's two different ways of doing it. For Tesla vehicles, everything's done inside the car. You don't, you know, it uses the card that's associated with your Tesla. You don't have to do anything with your phone. You just get out, take the plug, plug it in your car and get back in your car, or use the amenity, and it starts charging automatically. For non-Teslas, you need to use the app, and then it unlocks the handle and all that.
Okay, I was just trying to get a feel for what the economics for the driver's perspective was, because that would obviously influence week times and things like that.
Sure. We'd keep it as quick and painless as possible. We, we'd keep it as quick and painless as possible.
You brought up concern that if you only had 12, you could have people waiting for a car.
Potentially, maybe not this year, but five years from now.
And I guess that leads me to another question because theoretically, I guess if you're really successful, you could have people waiting for 16 of these in 10 years. So then, then what happens are, because depending on where the people are, are waiting, they could be blocking drive aisles, other parking spaces or whatever in the lot, right?
And that's why we're looking to build this site now is because we saw there, there a need years ago for another site in this area. So we're constantly monitoring, assessing usage and utilization and so we're always planning for more, more sites if they're needed to help relieve these type of sites.
Do you know, has anybody had any, have you had any discussions with the Dorro Restaurant people to see?
Yeah, we're in conversation with the property owner. He's, he's, yeah, he's very eager to get this underway.
What about the restaurant operator who's closest to where these affected spaces are? Have you spoken to him?
I haven't talked to the, to restaurant.
Does, does he know?
Yeah, I'm sure he does. I mean, we're, we're in constant communication with the, with the property owner.
But do you know specifically what, if anything, the property owner has discussed with the restaurant operator?
I don't, no, sir.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be a normal part of the public notice for this going in that the business owners would be notified or just the property?
It should be, yeah.
Probably not because they're.
Just the property owner.
Right, right.
We did, there is an affidavit that the property owner has to sign because the applicant signed and the property owner was not able to sign the same application. So we have an affidavit that the property owner is aware of the application. But no, we would not send notices to all the businesses.
I guess I, you know, I have some concern that, who knows if the property owner had discussed it with the tenant or not, but does the tenant have concerns if that's a important parking field to him? And, and as Tracy said earlier, I know, I think this way too. I guess even if it doesn't say exclusively for use of an electric vehicle, I sort of shy away from using one of those spaces instinctively a little bit. So I, I would want to make sure it's not an issue that we hear of after the fact. Sorry?
They'll put you aside and check or something?
I would make note that, you know, this is, you know, technology that's not very widespread yet, but having, you know, infrastructure to support them is, is crucial and, you know, along with the, the, these charging stations, at least to me, appear to be, you know, less nefarious to public health and safety and well-being as opposed to gasoline pumps. And if, if electric vehicles replace the internal combustion engine by the middle of the century, all those gasoline pumps that are in existence with the potential for pollution and so forth that they provide is, you know, is, is gone as a public concern. And these appear to be much, much safer, much more environmentally friendly. And, and there will be many more charging stations around the, you know, this community and around the state and the country to support, you know, an increasing supply of electric vehicles as opposed to what you could call the tyranny of the internal combustion engine.
I guess I would just observe, I think the Kohl's Plaza seems to have acres of unused parking at any particular time. There, there's a ton of asphalt, ton of parking spaces, two-thirds of which at least, anytime I seem to go there, including on a weekend, are open. And by contrast, this is a relatively tight plaza with a lot of uses and a restaurant right next to it and another bank building going up, et cetera. It doesn't have that same level of lack of use, for lack of a better word. And I guess one question is, have you considered adding more at the Kohl's site?
Absolutely, yes, sir. But from a, if you, from a customer service standpoint, this is a great location. If you're looking to spend 20 to 30 minutes somewhere, why not here versus at, you know, at like a large shopping center where, or a big box store, maybe not so much.
Yeah, I'm going to, I guess I'm going to suggest that I think we should continue the hearing, but I'd like to go through what everybody would like to see by way of new information next time. And I guess I, I, if you don't mind, I'll start and just the, I'd be very interested in representative usage data, whether it's the Rocky Hill location, maybe that's the most relevant one to just give us a sense of how many vehicles per day.
In times.
Per hour.
Yeah.
And, and that overnight.
There was one question I had, stacking. I've only seen it once in New Jersey, but I'm pretty sure Tesla probably doesn't make reservations to stack people. But how many people drive in cold and possibly would stack the parking lot? With eight, well, I did the math, eight, with 18, it's like 400 charges a day for 24 hours plus. But I don't think there's going to be a problem, but I know I've seen it on, you know, the highways where the people are stacked to get, get the power. Does that happen a lot?
Not, not in Connecticut. It's not, it's not as widely utilized like in New Jersey or New York City. Yeah.
Are, are, do you have any plans to, regardless of whether you want to pursue this site, do you have any plans to expand the Kohl's site that you're considering?
I can't see at this point. It's something we look at constantly though.
I guess just to finish my list and then let's move around the table here. I'd also, to see color photos of a fully populated line of, you know, 15 of these and get a better image of, of what it would be like, I would find helpful. And I think I mentioned, you know, just some consideration by our town planner in terms of whether any of this constitutes signage and if it does, whether there's a limitation on the area of signage that would apply or how far from a property line. And same question as to whether any of the equipment that they'd be putting in constitutes a structure subject to some type of, of setback. And then the last thing I have would be, I really am concerned about the loss of that mature tree because I think anything that you're going to replace it with is probably going to be a two-foot tall shrub, not a, you know, 25-foot tall tree that's right along the highway and helping to shield, you know, a, a ton of asphalt and pavement in the center. But why don't we continue? Chris, did you want to say?
So I just want to say, you know, thanks for your patience too because this is new for, for Weathersfield. So that's really, it's exciting and it's new. So we're trying to figure out how does this fit in with everything else that we would normally expect from an application and especially in this location. Even the idea about like notifying the businesses in the area, I would assume most of them are going to be excited about people who want to come there. But how does it work if somebody goes into Dorro for an hour and they're sitting at a 30-minute charging station?
Yeah.
And that's like kind of very different from what it is in Rocky Hill.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have people doing that just because they get charged more money. If they, if they're sitting there and they're still charging and they don't need to charge, they, they get charged more money. And so that, that prevents all of those cases.
Okay. And then, so how, what's the normal ratio? You said you do them in fours now. What's the normal ratio of accessible parking to the number of spaces? Because I think we actually have a, technically this lot would already be compliant based on the businesses that are there, but how does that, what's your normal ratio?
Yeah, so I think we, we're about, I think we're at 5%. So for, for up to 21, up to 20 stalls, we'll have one van accessible, so one handicap parking space. And once we go over 20, then we'll have one van accessible, one standard nine-foot parking space. So we're, I think we stick with into like the 5% rule. We follow, we follow the IBC table essentially for, for handicap parking stalls for charging. So typically for our sites, you know, up to 20 stalls, it's one van accessible parking space.
So this is actually adding an accessible space?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The, the one you're going to include will have charger access with that space?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
We also had a couple, Tracy and Dave both were about to say something a minute ago.
Go ahead.
I was just, I was dealing with the fine that takes place with Tesla.
Yeah.
Oh, for, if you're.
I was told by my, my friend who owns a Tesla that you get a five-minute notice that your car is being charged and then you get five minutes afterwards, but then you're charged a minute for every, a dollar for every minute after that.
I'm not exactly sure on the, the actual cost, but it, because it changes based on how, how utilized the site is and how full it is and if anyone's waiting. It just, it's, it changes, but I know that there's a, there's like a penalty if you're parked there charging.
Which is a great idea.
Yeah, but also, but also though, if, if we're allowing people who aren't charging the vehicles to park there, it kind of isn't really fair to the people who are.
Yeah, it's not.
Parked there for an hour because, you know, they charged and they're still sitting. I don't know.
I know the state of Connecticut back in 2018 was going to have a fine in for if you parked illegally in a parking place. And I don't think the legislation ever went through.
Yeah, we, we don't intend to tow, tow vehicles or anything like that.
I guess to go back to what Tracy just said, you know, if, if in fact ordinary people not charging take up half the spaces, then could that lead to one of these queuing backup issues? Because now you've got only six operational or, or whatever, how many spaces here instead of the full complement? So I guess that goes with the territory if you're not making them exclusively for charging.
I mean, I, I personally would almost like to see them be used exclusively for charging and not for other parking, just so that that wouldn't happen. But if you're going to leave it so that people can park there, I don't think that, you know, I think that you have to do something about not fining people if they stay, you know, past their charge point or something. Because they're going to pull out and then somebody else is going to pull in who's not even charging a vehicle. So, I mean, they disturb their dinner or whatever to go move their car. So I don't know. That's just my personal opinion.
How would you charge, say, an, an, an average customer of, that's going in, in the shopping area? They park in, you know, one of these spaces, they're not charging, they're just parking, you know? So you have no data on their vehicle other than the, the security camera stuff that takes down the license plate. How are you going to charge them anyway? Or could you charge them?
Unless they're charging, we wouldn't, we wouldn't charge them anything.
Okay. So free parking is still free parking for those.
Yes, sir.
Your customers there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think one piece of information I'd like for next time is what your incremental cost or challenge would be to move it over to, I don't know how to describe this, that other side that we were looking at.
I lost it. One along the middle entrance.
Do we take that off the table, Ashley?
The tree, you mean the tree part there?
Yeah, near the main entrance.
I think you'd lose a lot of vegetation by doing that.
I was also just thinking, it's probably a bad spot too because that's where Planet Fitness is. And that's where you're going to get people like me who would plug the car in and then go in the gym for an hour and a half.
Yeah.
They also lost a lot of parking on the other side because of credit union.
Okay, so that took, that took that off the table. So we're going to deal only with these 16 spots or?
Well, I think that's one of the things I think Dave is going to look into to see what's the current required count and provided count as we sit here now.
Because I think what's interesting is, is I have, I don't know where those, I know where Kohl's is. I've been, I'm kind of familiar with the lot. I'm not sure where the chargers are in that lot. Are they close to the building or they?
Right when you pull in.
Right when you pull in. You know, you take that sharp right.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so that's away from the building.
Way, way.
That's a very different environment.
Exactly.
Than this.
Right.
So I, I think it's going to be hard. Again, it comes to the learning thing, right? Weathersfield's very different. Anywhere where we put charging stations is going to be very different from a big box retailer establishment. I think, I think there's a lot to learn from this and hopefully in a good way.
No, we, we would prefer to, you think about it from the customer's perspective. What are you going to want to do when you got to waste 20 to 30 minutes? You know, you're not going to want to sit in your car. Maybe you've got to, you know, go somewhere, use the restroom, buy a drink or some food or something.
And if you look at charging in the area, just like, so like the char, other, it, will this be one of the first charging banks in the area that is this close to retail?
Um, I'm not sure.
Because like there's the closest that I think is the Newing, there was the Newington one on the Turnpike, there's the Rocky Hill one, and then there's some in downtown.
There's a couple in Glasson Berry.
Sort of like in a retail type place?
Yep.
So there's a lot to learn from that.
Yeah, there's only two in Glasson Berry. That's not, not as many as.
I think we have one right off.
There's a single, I think, charger at the Panera. I don't know if it's still there, but it was there for a long time.
I think it is still there, yeah.
There.
Yeah.
So the, the other question is just sort of maybe for the continuing of this is, is, is the public safety question is just, I think of when the, when the chief comes up and shows the hotspot map of town, the motel tends to be kind of close to one of them, I believe, if I think, if I'm remembering correctly. And so it's, I just, I don't know, like, do you normally consider public safety in this, especially like late night and, and location to hotspots?
Oh, location to hotspots?
Yes. There's just a lot of calls for the, for the Weathersfield Police to that motel area.
Gotcha. I don't, we don't necessarily look at the, like what the blotter says and, you know, hotspots. We just, we assess the site, you know, we try to think of it, if I'm char, if my grandma's charging there at 3:00 AM, is she going to feel safe charging here? And we feel like this, this would be an acceptable location, but I don't think we look at the data that, that deeply just yet.
I, I have a number of things that I'd like you to address next time since we're continuing this meeting. The one that I, I really think you need to look at carefully is abandoning these 16 locations here because I think this is going to be a problem for Dorro. I really do. And the fact that it's not designated as dedicated is going to be confusing for people. And I think stacking is going to occur and it's going to cause a problem for this restaurant. So I would like you to consider moving it to the west side. I know it's going to cost you a little more because you're going to have to bring that line across, but it's, it's possible to do it, I'm pretty sure, by just looking at this configuration. And make a dedicated set on that side. Instead of 16 that you're sharing, you're not, you're not using 16. You're making an argument to me that you need 16, but you're not going to have 16 because you're going to be competing with, with everybody else that wants to go to Dorro. And there's a lot of people that go to Dorro. So if you could come up with a, a west side dedicated area, I don't know if you can get 16 there, but it looks like you can probably get close to 16. I, I think that would be preferable. So I'd like you to address west side dedication of units right through there and along the other side there. Down, down where the trees are there, like that, that, that whole corner there. Yeah.
Their property.
That's not your property there?
No, sir.
So that, so that's, that divider is the property line?
Yep. Okay. So then it would be those, those units right there, dedicated, dedicated to those, those parking spaces there. I'd like you to run an economic analysis of dedicated versus 16 shared. The, the other thing that I, I'm really curious in knowing is, has Dorro known about this and what is Dorro's position on it? I, I don't know that the owner of this area needs to talk to Dorro, but since, when, when we normally do this, we usually send out notices to everybody within 300 feet. Now I'm understanding that because, because this is a bunch of commercial enterprises within this area, they didn't get notices. So I, I'd like to know, does Dorro understand what's going on here and are they okay with this change? I'd like you to.
To clarify, are you asking for tenant consent? Dorro's consent of the project?
I just want to know Dorro's, their opinion, yes.
If, if, if this were like a, a different type of project, like there would normally be notice to abutting properties?
Yeah.
And they would have showed up for the public hearing to either say that they supported or they don't and just give different reasons. So for example, even Tomo just went in and is, is a new grocery store. I don't remember their original application because they were in for something from before, but did, did they have any kind of a parking arrangement with this property owner or like an easement or anything that might, that might have said, oh, well, they're putting in a grocery store, so we'll, we'll, we understand that that actual lot doesn't have the appropriate parking for a grocery store. So do they have some kind of lease with, or arrangement with this property owner? And so is this going to affect their existing parking arrangement?
So my, my basic concern is normally we notify everybody within 300 feet of where something is going to happen. And it doesn't sound like these people may have been notified. So I'd, I'd like that to happen. And if they want to show up and talk to us, I want, I want to hear their opinion. And, you know, it's part of our deliberation. The other thing that concerns me, if you, if you can't do anything on the, on the west side and you're really kind of constrained to, to working with the 16 that you're proposing, you're really kind of constrained to, to working with the 16 that you're proposing, I, I, I'm really, really concerned about removing that tree. You got a root structure there that's, that's 20 years old, I think, that's, that's what you said. I, I believe it. It's a beautiful tree. And I'd hate to see that go. Anything that you do, Dave, I'm sure you can come up with some nice evergreens, but it, it's not going to replace something that's 20 years old with the root structure that's there. So I would like you to address with the owner, moving off of that corner where that tree is and going into the three spaces. You can still get 16, and the owner has to, has to basically agree to the three. I would like you to address that with the owner and tell us definitively if that's possible or not. Okay? And Dave, if that happens, you probably have to look at the parking now, because now, now you're losing three, you know, and I'm wondering if that's going to, it may or not, but, but at least let's look at that. So that's kind of the conditions that are concerning me, and if you could address those next time. I'd like to say though, that, that I am, I'm a nuclear engineer, so technology is, is, is something I, I'm really into. And I think this is great. And putting in these, in Weathersfield would, would be great. But we have to do this judiciously. We just can't ram them somewhere and affect what's going on in, in that area, you know, messes up the operation of other people and so forth and so on, or, you know, reduces the greenery. Those are the things you really have to be deliberate. Normally, when we get people coming to us, they thoroughly go through the site plan and address all these things that you've been hearing from us tonight. So, so maybe this is a little bit different for you, but I think you need to do that.
No, and, and we did, we've been in communication with, I guess, the previous planner and?
That's been a while though. So now we have a new planner and, and we have a bunch of new commissioners. So I think it'd be good for you to do that.
But we absolutely tried to reach out to the town early in the process and?
And one last thing that I'll say is, I don't own an electric car. A good friend of mine does have a Tesla, and I do travel with him quite a bit. And yeah, I, I've, I've actually sat in spaces for 20, 30 minutes, as you say. One thing though, that I do recall is I think there were dedicated spaces. These, these were in Massachusetts where we were traveling. So I still think that dedication would probably be the better solution here if possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Peter has a list. Tony?
Scott, I want to thank you for diligent effort you've given so far. You gave us a lot of data, a lot of information.
I remember.
I agree with Commissioner Thompson, who stated that this shows a level of progression and innovation for the town of Weathersfield. I think the landlord at this site has given due diligence on all the tenants there between Dutch Point, you know, the 24/7 Planet Fitness that's there. I mean, this is a model shopping plaza that we have that we hope could trickle over to a lot of the other shopping plazas here. There's eight, nine trees along the solistine there. I have no problem getting rid of one. Especially if you're going to do cosmetic arrangements around the Tesla supercharger cabinet, with six, seven feet tall, you call it the utility transformer. I think that's important to wrap around and maybe aesthetically give us maybe some more ideas on what you might submit to that. I know that section 53A and 13 and 53B 6, David, one mentions uses and one structures, I think we might want to prove it under both sections anyway on it. You know, you've got about a dozen bullets here that, you know, you can take back to the drawing board and stuff. I think a lot of these can be revisited, and I want to compliment you for the effort.
Absolutely.
All right, we're, we're, been a lot of, you know, issues and hashing around here. We're not trying to be obstructionist to you. I, I'm myself, I'm probably favorably disposed to your proposal. But it is a case of first impression to use some legalese in the, in this ballpark for us. And so we appreciate your patience.
No, but why don't we, our town planner has a list of his own, so why don't we give him a chance to run through that?
Sure. I just want to make sure that I captured the items that we're going to try to work through between now and the, the next public hearing. So, in no particular order, and I may have missed some words, but these are notes to myself that I'll work on. So number one, discuss with the applicant the ability to save the tree or relocate the chargers or reduce the number of chargers, including the options of relocating to another location in the plaza. Confirm sign area, sign definition and the related setback of the posts. So I'm going to look at, do the posts themselves meet the definition of a sign and therefore do they have to be set back a certain distance? Confirm structure setbacks. Are the structures, a structure, are the charging posts a structure? And if so, what is the setback required? I'm going to look at the parking space setback. I think that'll be minor because they're existing and they were approved, but I'm going to look at that anyway. I am going to confirm that police and fire reviewed and provided comments. I'm pretty sure the fire marshal did. And I think I got a handwritten note that the police did as well. I just want to have those. I'll make sure those are in the, in the record as well. I will look at the most recent parking analysis done, and if there isn't one, I'll do another one for, to make sure that we can reduce the space by at least one or more, depending on what modifications happen to the charger. So I'll look at the most recent parking analysis for number of spaces required and those available. This one is, I just have, provide some level of confirmation that the tenants were notified of the application. So I might reach out to the plaza owner myself. I do have their name and number just to see how they would like that to occur. So I will sort of figure out the best way to do that. If any commissioners have an idea, let me know. I'll gladly take some feedback, some ideas. I will also see if there was a shared parking arrangement with this plaza and the next plaza, specifically the Tomo Market in Caillou Ban location. Have design review, conduct a review. I'm going to come back to that in one minute. Have the applicant, ask the applicant, or I just wrote applicant submit representative data usage, and applicant to provide color renderings of installed chargers. Before I ask my other question, is there anything else that I missed from the commission? Okay, so I'm going to just, I, I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page. So I looked at the regulations for design review, and just because I want to make sure that we agree. So under applicability for when the design review committee reviews applications outside of signs or any new construction, it says any significant exterior building change or other site improvement which requires a site plan or design review. So I think the important thing there is significant exterior building change or site improvement. Special permit, which is what they're here for, does require a site plan, so that could by itself just trigger design review. But I just want to make sure, I will try to get the design review committee to meet. We have another application they need to meet on anyway in two weeks. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm going to have them review this.
Only in advisor capacity, nothing else.
Which is what they are anyway. So, that's my list. Thank you.
Yes, good.
So we, we appreciate your working with us and, you know, I guess you're going to have to, you'll just coordinate with our town planner if you need more time than two weeks, or you can get it, you know, to us in time to be able to review it. I guess just work with him. But assuming you are ready, I believe our next meeting is Tuesday, April 15th. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, yes.
One other question, because I won't be at that meeting, is when you're, when you're looking to install these stations in, in other communities in Connecticut, is it kind of similar of a vibe where people are kind of like, ah, well, there's different rules? Or are there some places that it's a lot easier than others?
Be honest.
Some places are easier than others. Some states are easier than others. California, obviously being kind of the role model for this, they've, they've sort of made a state level permitting, you know, thing where, you know, each jurisdiction just kind of follows the state rules. I'm not, I don't think Connecticut has adopted anything yet. And so we run across a lot of jurisdictions that just have never dealt with it before. And so we're trying to, to kind of navigate sort of what we're doing right now. And that's okay. So, yeah, I mean, we, we obviously want to be an asset to the community and, and provide, you know, this type of amenity to, to the community. So we want to be good neighbors.
Thank you.
One, one more thing, I guess, to the extent that you're able to just tell us within a whatever, you know, five mile radius or adjoining towns, I would be curious, Newington, Rocky Hill, Glastonbury, you know, how many do they have and at what locations do they have them? Just so we could get a sense of the type of places they're doing it and the, and the volume. But one question for you too is, can a, can a, is this a different, is there a difference between Tesla itself opening an installation versus somebody with an office building, for example, saying, I just want to have two charging stations in my parking lot?
Yeah. I think that the most important difference is ours are fast charging.
Right.
And whereas if somebody had an office building, they're probably the level twos that, you know, instead of 30 minute charge, it's six to seven hours.
Right. And you have, don't you have them at the DOT headquarters on the Berlin Turnpike? Do they have them there?
State building, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah. And maybe commuter parking lots, state of Connecticut? I'm wondering if you have them.
I think you'll typically, you'll find a lot of ours kind of along 95, that, you know, the, the, the big stop offs along the?
Yeah, rest stops.
Yep. So we'll have, you know, eight or 12 kind of there. That's, that's kind of an ideal situation where people are there 20, 30 minutes.
Right, right.
But I, I can only speak to the, talking to your, within the five mile, yeah, I can only really speak to the Tesla supercharger numbers. I, I have no visibility on.
Just focus on the Tesla super, you know, what are the closest?
Gotcha.
Ones in the area would be good to know.
20 minutes is pretty, or 20 minutes is pretty attractive charging time versus six hours.
Right, right.
And we're right on the highway, so.
Would, would someone like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to our meeting of Tuesday, April 15th at 7:00 PM?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second, Tom?
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. And again, feel free to work with Mr. Elder and, you know, if you need more time, have questions, he should be able to help you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Other business, number four? Do we have any other business? Nope. Minutes of March 18th, would someone like to make a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 18th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Chris, all in, if there's no discussion or corrections or anything, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or no's?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. Great. Next, we probably, we may need one more abstentions from one of the alternates so we don't have 10 people voting, if my math is correct. Right?
Went for the last minute? Oh, because we didn't have anyone.
Tony, well, actually, no, sorry. We're okay with you abstaining. I think it all works out because it leaves us with nine. Sorry, my math is not that quick tonight. Okay. Public comments on general matters of planning and zoning? Anybody here for public comment? No? Correspondents? Anything, Dave? It doesn't look like we have any. Staff report?
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I've been talking about is, if the, if you're interested and the commission's interested, I would like to schedule a public meeting just to talk about the regulations. Some point, a special meeting just to tie our working, a work session to talk about the regulation amendments.
Okay.
So we can discuss that now or discuss it the next meeting. But there's a couple like, you know, electric vehicle charging.
Yep.
The accessory dwelling units, and then there's some.
Other.
Housing.
Right.
I'd like to talk about as well. And just some corrections. It would be good to, they're not as extensive as they probably need to be. So, but I do think it would be better to do it at a special meeting.
I guess just in terms of people on the commission, if, if we were going to have a special meeting, is Tuesday, you know, a non-first or third Tuesday, but a second or fourth Tuesday a better day of the week? Or doesn't it matter to people? Doesn't matter? Okay. So do you want to, do you want to give some thought to when, when we would be in position to have a discussion and get it on the books?
How about late April, early May? That gives me a few weeks to get an order, run them by town council. I was going to suggest run them by town council, make sure they're consistent with the public acts and the legislature. So.
And again, this is just going to be a sort of pre, almost like a pre-application prior to anything being filed or going to public.
I think of as a workshop. So every, the commissioners understand what's being proposed, why it's being proposed, and how it's going to be implemented.
Okay.
Good idea.
You know, I think the accessory in law, the accessory apartments themselves can be a bit confusing and it's good for everyone to understand what we have to change.
Okay.
Would that be open to, or to the public to sit in on it? I, you know, one thing is, is just by kind of commenting on off a model, every time we have general comment, like, there's nobody here.
Right.
But yet, every time there's a decision on anything, Facebook explodes, right? So anything where we can get the public to come in and listen and ask questions, I think that's great. So if you can advertise that a little bit, I think it would hurt.
Want to identify a date and then could we maybe have Lynn email everybody?
Yeah.
If there's a couple choices to say how many can go to?
That's what I'll do.
Each one? Okay. That sounds good.
Good. I just want to bring up that myself and Tom attended the annual conference, the FPZA annual conference last Thursday.
Right.
Interesting evening. The discussion was a judge in Hartford that normally sits and reviews, you know, applications with affordable housing. He's now retired, but he's been a judge for a while. He spoke. And boy, it was a very contentious meeting. I mean, it exploded. Cheshire was like up in arms. So the, the crux of it was that, you know, a lot of the smaller towns are feeling the pressure, it seems, you know, to add affordable housing, and are getting hit hard by, by some developers. They were talking about these big box developments going into areas that they, they just thought, you know, were just pristine and they were being ruined. And these judges, and they poked at this judge, you know, are just saying, fine, you know, we're going to do it. That's the state of Connecticut law. And their point was that you, you just can't do that. You can't just blanketly go that route because in the case of, I think it was Cheshire, they said, we don't have the schools. The infrastructure can't support all that. None of that stuff is being considered. And the town is being hurt by, by these, you know, applications. So it made me think, and you brought it up, that we really should look at ours carefully. I, I know we're nowhere near what Cheshire is. I mean, they're only a few percent, so I could see them getting into trouble. We're like 8% or something like that.
We're 9.57%. We need 51 units, Peter. According to 2024 data, 51 units.
Yeah. So probably we don't, we won't have those kind of issues, but it, it just made me think.
Well, we do until we have 51 more units.
All right. So, so it made me think it's probably a good idea to, to get together and figure out how we're going to handle this problem. Because we don't want something going in that is going to hurt the town and we have no control over. And I could see how much angst the other towns are having over this.
My, my impression was somewhat different, I guess, because I'm a, I'm a member of the legal profession myself. So all the arguments that were just cited is, that's creating difficulty for towns, those are not valid legal justifications for opposing or denying an, an application. They have to, you know, the denial has to be based upon issues that are, you know, legally qualified to, for a court to act upon. And while the, the meeting last Thursday was rather tumultuous, it was essentially one town that was creating the uproar, and that was Cheshire. And they, they just simply feel opposed on, but all of their arguments that they were making, you know, were non-justifiable from a legal perspective. They may have an economic basis for their complaint, but they're, they're not legally valid. And there've been dozens of appeals that have been taken. And I think all but two of those appeals have resulted in the, the position of that town zoning commission was, was turned down, was overruled. And that, that indicates the level of, you know, emotionalism that exists within the scope of this issue. And also the, the lack of, you know, sophistication and, and lack of reasonable accommodation and lack of foresight that those communities are, have taken in, in the positions that they have adopted.
And just to, to add? And just to, to, to add to what Tom said, I mean, I think it really comes down to the state statute on affordable housing.
Right.
Has very limited grounds where a town denies an affordable housing application to be able to be successful and defend its denial. So, you know, you've, both of you have mentioned, you know, are there theoretically other impacts that could potentially be statutorily considered? I mean, you read all the time, I think, about different legislators offering thoughts on amending the statute. But it's basically the way the statute is written right now. It's very, very difficult for a denial to not be overturned by the courts in terms of what you can.
This is one thing to be, to consider.
Just, I wanna say this because it's, I don't get to say it very often, that you're both right. But I just wanna say you're both right that legally speaking, those arguments have no standing. But practically speaking, there are real impacts, economic impacts to the municipalities when unexpected, unplanned for growth occurs. So I just wanna say you're both right.
The problem to me seems to be, uh, resolvable only when you deal with the tax structure of the state and the way that, you know, such municipal functions such as education and the like are being financed by the state. Because the property tax is inherently regressive and creates a tremendous burden upon municipalities as their primary source. And municipalities have such a limited way of accessing, uh, capital other than the property tax. And therein lies much of the, the problem that's associated with that side of the issue. Uh, then they, of course, the other side of the issue is the emotional aspect of it. And my experience has been in the development side, particularly developing facilities for people with disabilities, where I've seen things like group homes burned down, uh, in, by community opponents and, you know, uh, basically acts of prejudice and violence taking place in opposition to, uh, the kinds of changes that we need to make in order to make us a more integrated and inclusive society. So, uh, so the, it's, it's complicated. And, um, as one old professor of mine used to say, for every complex problem, there's a simple solution which is wrong.
I, I would just add that I think, again, I agree, you're both right. And, and especially the sense that no matter what happens, it's going to be contentious when there's a large development that somebody wants to put in town. And that are, it, we're in a tough spot because there's state law and our job is to look at the application that's in front of us. And that's really difficult to put and listen to all the public comment and, and take all that additional input and then have to look our neighbors in the eye and say, sorry, that, that doesn't align with the law. Um, and so, or risk putting the town in legal trouble and facing court hearings and, and legal fees. And so, um, uh, the best we can do is hope that we have the clearest zoning regulations written down and updated in alignment with state statute, so.
Right, and I think Dave definitely has some ideas that he wants to talk with us about in terms of how we might add some things to our regulations that we don't have.
I guess my only point, I'm not making an argument either way. I've just told you what happened that night. It was crazy. Uh, and, and Dave, you're right, we should really look at those 51 units and the sooner the better. That's my point.
Um.
I agree.
All right, and he covered, I think, everything on the agenda for tonight. Would somebody like to make a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
All, second.
I know we're that close.
All right. Peter, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Did the two of you behave during this?